Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Brier.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
We'll call Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the Councilman Brier be excused.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince that Councilmember Brier be excused. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. First item on the agenda is a very special presentation from Fire and Emergency Services. Chief Peterson.
Good evening, members of the council. Our citizen hasn't arrived yet. She's parking the car right now, so it'll be a few minutes, so if we could maybe go to citizen comment and then come back to us.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move we adjust the agenda accordingly.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Person that we postpone the special presentation till after we get through a couple of other items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Administrative report?
I have no reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move on to audience comment, and we have a couple people that have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. The city clerk has the light and timer right next to her. First is I, Ms. Peterson.
I put her name on, but she hasn't arrived yet either, so it's...
Okay, next is Howard McComber.
I'm Howard McComber, live in the Renton Highlands. Wanted to say a couple of things tonight that I think is very appropriate. We live in a town full of volunteers. We live in a town that has a lot of excitement going on, that is just really wonderful. I came to the community of the hall in time to see some wonderful students from Lindbergh about the robotics, and I've been involved with a lot of kids doing a lot of things everywhere. The biggest thing we have in our lives here is raising those children and giving them positive things to take up their time, and things where they get challenged for things that are excellent. And I think that if we look around, there's opportunities for everyone to participate. I know all of you personally, and I know all of you are involved up to your ears in helping and in volunteering and in making it a good place. And I just want the folks around TV to know that there's a lot of things going on, and you can pitch in and help. The city has, if you go on their website, they have opportunities. I'm a member of REACH. If you want to go, we have, just type in REACH and you'll get us, the Renton Economic Council churches. We have a lot of things going. If you're interested in young men, we have Boy Scouts everywhere, and I think the Boy Scouts is a tremendous organization. And I think if we just look around, the opportunities are fantastic. It's important that we all participate, that we all make it a better place. There's just so much that can be done, and it can't be done by our government. Our government can't do it all, nor should they. The people who need to do it's us. Each of us has things that we can do, where we can see we can make a difference. And I appreciate all of you, because I've seen every one of you involved on your own time, at your own money, at your own back, helping it. That makes it a better place. The amount that we give is not the important thing. I'm grateful for Bill, especially that he married Melinda, or that he did what it did charity for the rest of his life. I think that's good. I think Warren Buffett, figuring out that he didn't have to create a wheel, he could just help Bill move his along, and through billions of dollars. That's wonderful. But I've seen people with very modest, almost no means, that can go out of their way to make things better. We have mentoring. Marcy's, the poster child for mentoring, you know, community and schools. There are just so many places that we can help. The thing to do is to look around and say, how can we make this better? I want to thank you guys for helping me with my Highlands. We're gonna have a library there. It's gonna be a wonderful Mecca, and we're gonna be able to use that. And the Highlands Community, I mean, the Highlands Elementary School, and I'd like to have Honeydew be the same. I was talking with Jennifer. She's involved with the YMCA. They have some wonderful programs. We have a program where we will feed the children. We have a problem in this town because we have so many children at risk, and there are lunch programs and breakfast programs for children all summer. And this is a time to kind of get the word out, because a very small percentage, like 10 percent of those who could qualify, and I don't think they're gonna look real tight for qualifications, can have breakfast and lunch, because a lot of kids don't have the nutrition that they need, except at the school from people who help. And I think we need to spread the word out, just be emissaries, to let people know there are opportunities here to serve and to receive. And as we do that, as we look for different ways that we can make a difference, we will find that we can make this even a better community. This is, I think, the best volunteer town that exists in western Washington. Have a lot of passion and a lot of feelings, but it's the best volunteer town, and we need to help everybody. We need to get everybody at the table. We have, in my neighborhood, it's fun to walk around, because you see, it looks like the United Nations. We have every kind of interesting, I don't, costume's the wrong thing to say, but it's clothing that is just fun, and all sorts of things that are just great. And we have, I don't want to advertise for somebody, if you go down to DK Market sometime, and just walk around at DK Market, you feel like you're walking into the Middle East or something. It's really fun. My wife used to say, I just wish we had someone who could teach us how to do the recipes that are here. We just have a wonderful diverse group, and if we work at bringing us all together and helping and having programs, I think that we can make this even a greater town, though, to tell the truth, really modestly, this is the best city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Steve Swaim.
My name is Dr. Steve Swaim. My city of residence currently is Seattle. Tonight I would like to visit with you and talk to you about the Renton Side Channel, which is a salmon spawning channel. It's located behind Ron Regis Park. That's where the channel receives its input. This channel extends from Ron Regis, approximately 2,500 linear feet down to the opening in the river where the salmon come up. We currently have done a repair on this channel in 2012 with FEMA money, and I'm here tonight to try to bring you up to date as to the status of this channel, and what I'm particularly concerned with is how much water is able to get from the Cedar River currently into this channel. In fact, the recent events of March with our high level of water after the nineties of rain, and really by river standards, is not really a flood, produced significant changes at the entrance to this channel. It's so bad that we may not have a spawning season in 2014. And I brought some pictures to show you. I hope I can run through this. This first slide is the ASBILT. This slide I took in August of 2012. The top slide shows the riverside entrance. It's got water in it. The river level is 200 cubic feet per second flow. This is the USGS number from the Renton gauge. I tried to use that to standardize this. The picture down below shows the, what would be the fish side or the salmon side of this channel at the very top, and you can see there's water in the entrance channel there. So, the ASBILT shows flow into this channel at 200 cubic feet per second, which is pretty important, because that turns out to be right around the mean level of flow in August for the Cedar River. The next slide. So I watched this channel through the winter. The upstream bank portions of that were supposed to break off. Other portions collapsed into the entrance, and then we had sediment. So if you look at the top picture, you're actually looking at the upstream bank. You're looking at water in the Cedar River, and all the dirt that you see that is in front of the permeable levee is what was deposited in the first winter. Now, to get an idea of what that amounts to, the river in that top picture is flowing at 360 cubic feet per second, and the water doesn't even touch the permeable levee. Now, this occurred in June. This is the, this is what we dealt with on spawning this last year. To get an idea of the displacement of this dirt and the severity of this problem, you can look at the picture on the bottom, which I shot in January of this year, and I shot this particular picture to show you. This is about one or two inches over that entrance sediment pile, and it took the river flowing at 675 cubic feet per second to generate enough height and volume to actually have water go up and touch the permeable levee. Now, this is the primary input for this channel. We repaired about 1,100 feet, but that 1,100 feet is connected to another, like 1,400 feet, and all of that depends on this input from the river. You can see on the picture on the lower left or lower right, that's the fish side, and you can actually see there's very little turbulence on the input side at a flow of 675 cubic feet per second. So this is almost triple what the ASBILT was, and this is the condition that existed in January. I would be concerned about this condition, but unfortunately, March was not kind to this channel. And I had hoped the high water might have washed some of this sediment away. It might have actually dislodged some of the construction sediment that overlies two-thirds of the spawning gravel in the repaired section of this channel. But let's see what happened. This picture I shot, I'm sorry about the quality, it's not fairly great, but in December, and this is what we want to see. This is spawning salmon. It's right in the same section of the spawning channel. You can see the water's clear. You can see spawning gravel. You can see the fish have adequate spawning depth. It could be deeper, but it's adequate. This flow was 730 cubic feet per second.
Did you happen to say what the spawning channel flow should be?
You know, I don't know. I've been trying to get that information from Public Works, and they didn't tell me what the...
Okay.
What I gauged this by is basically the depth.
Okay.
So salmon to spawn, you know, you'll have to ask them, but your other channel, River Mile 35, has a seasonal depth during the spawning season of at least six inches.
Okay.
And this is barely six inches right here. It's low. And this is, again, 730.
Mr. Swaim, I was gonna ask you, because your five minutes are up, but I know you've got a longer presentation than that. Do you have approximate?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a final slide here that I can show you.
Okay, well, I don't want to rush you all the way through that, and I think, but I think what the council needs to know, you've got a, you've got a concern, and I'm even thinking this could be potentially a topic for Committee of the Hall where you'd have more time to be able to explain this, but...
If I could have two minutes, I'll show you the last slide.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, so, this is what the channel looked like on April the 4th. This is the, right at the top is the permeable levee. This is the fish side of the channel. This looks nothing like the slide I showed you with the fish spawning in it. In fact, when we do a longer presentation, you're gonna find that this rock right here is present in both those slides as a reference point. And now we have all this sediment here, and you can see these waves of sediment that came in. I shot this picture on the 4th of April. The river was flowing at six times the designed flow. It was flowing at 1,200 cubic feet per second when I shot this picture. The chart down below shows you the 45-year mean flow during the spawning season for August through January. You'll notice in January that, you know, our flows, this mean, doesn't get over 1,125. So if this is what the channel looks like at 1,200, what do you think it's gonna look like in October when we only have 365 cubic foot of flow?
Mm-hmm.
You know, a third of this. This is vitally important to the entire channel. The side streams that used to fill, feed the lower portion of this drainage. The river has sunk. Those are high and dry. They start to operate also around 1,200, 1,300. So, but I'd be more than happy to come back and give you a longer presentation.
Okay. I see that we've got your address here. If you have, oh, we've got your email too, so we'll get in contact with you.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, and, you know, I, first of all, thank you so much for coming down, and I guess, am I remembering right, that says Seattle? Does Seattle actually own the spawning channel? Is it part of their water supply mitigation?
Well, it was actually a mitigation requirement after the dredging of the, of the Lower Cedar River. Army Corps built this initially in 2000.
Okay.
There was flood damage in '06 and '09.
Yeah.
And basically, it failed from, for sedimentation, siltation, and then finally the levee blew out in '09.
Okay. And I was trying to remember, because I think, I think there was a partnership, but part of it is just the fact that Chester Morse Reservoir affects the river and the flows they maintain, and I thought that this might have been, or maybe as partner, Seattle was part of that mitigation to do this. However, really where I was going with this is, I think it's enormously interesting data, and I think our Public Works Department could maybe look at it and forward it to the right people. I, you know, I'd be interested in seeing a little bit more, but it also strikes me that maybe there's some straightforward solutions, like maybe that should be getting fed with a pipe that's drawing from the middle of the channel or something, but, you know...
Well, you have a channel that operates at a totally different feet, River Mile 35 that I'd love to talk to you about.
Okay, yeah.
It has a plumbed entrance, and the whole goal of this is to maintain
Yeah.
a proper spawning depth throughout the...
Right, and that's what I think in one is a plumbed entrance, yeah.
And it's gated. That channel costs 2.1 million.
Okay.
This channel costs 316,000.
Although, I don't know if the plumbed entrance was that, but anyway, my, the point I was gonna make is, probably you've got enough data that we could give it to our water department, and they could probably get it to the right hands. So, that's my thought. I, I mean, great job of collecting information in the photos.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next is Claudia Donnelly.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Claudia Donnelly, and I live east of Renton in King County. Years ago, I read Councilman Corman's blog. One blog entry said, if I remember correctly, that a developer had cut some of the trees on his property. He wasn't happy. I believe this is when Renton's tree policy started. Let's talk about Renton's tree policy, please. Here's an article in the February 21st Renton issue of the Renton Reporter. It talks about a development on Benson, that Benson Hill residents don't want to go in because 1,300 trees will be coming down. The developer proposes to keep 102. And I didn't see anything in the newspaper about a retraction on the mistake that Ms. Timmons may have made by saying that all 1,300 trees would be coming down. How come? How come the tree policy doesn't do more? I've been told that this project is on hold. Two weeks ago, someone was here talking about Piper's Bluff. That development on Hoquiem had 211 trees on it. Most were cut down. According to the preliminary plant report, 54 trees would be excluded from the Renton tree policy. The contractor was supposed to save 47. Here's a picture of Piper's Bluff. I don't see any 47 trees. It's bare. Where are they? Last week, there's also a proclamation for Renton being a tree-friendly city. In the last year or two, the Albertson store on Duval and Sunset was remodeled. This is what the trees in the shopping plaza looked like. They provided shade for people who had cars and parked under the trees. They had shade for babies that were waiting in cars, or dogs, like I keep my dog in the car sometimes. The contractors took out three trees that provided shade in the summer. Here is a picture of a replacement tree. It's right here. It looks like it's flowering dogwood. They are sticks. This is Renton's policy in action. Replace mature trees with sticks. Where's the New Highlands, where the New Highlands Library is going in, some nice-looking trees were removed. Are they going to be replaced? Nobody can tell me. At the end of my road, a contractor is building three make, three-plus mega houses. There were mini 100-foot trees on the site. At least six-plus trees have come down, and I can't find out if they are to be replaced. These are two of the trees that are left. I've lived in that neighborhood for 25 years, so seeing those trees come down was a heartache. How come you, as Renton officials, don't like trees or streams? I've talked to other Renton residents about Renton's environmental policies, and they always talk about getting some people into office who actually want to protect the streams and trees within the city. I am even looking forward to being a resident, because then I can sponsor an initiative to work to pass stricter laws to protect the trees that are growing in the city and protect our streams, like May Creek. I also have some other questions. At 13815 Southeast May Valley Road, clearing has started for a new house. This property abuts May Creek. Who's going to protect May Creek from yellow water going down it, or damage like was done to Honey Creek by the Piper Bluff developers? And why have our developers here in the city accorded a privilege that other people aren't? All I'm doing is asking questions, because I don't like to see what is currently happening. Thank you.
Chip, did you want to try to address any of the tree questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Law. Mayor, members of the City Council, Chip Vincent from Community and Economic Development. And first, I would just like to share with you that for myself and the other almost 50 employees in the Department of Community and Economic Development, we take significant pride in the work we do providing good, high-quality customer service for the citizens in the city of Renton, and that includes the development community. We apply the rules as courteously and as professionally as we can to both the public as well as the development community. We recognize that there always is potential conflict between new development and the quality of life and the livability that we have in our communities. But I just want to say with, and underscore this point, for myself and every member of the Department of Community and Economic Development, we hold high to our standards of allowing new development, but ensuring that it improves the quality of life and the livability of our communities. Otherwise, there's no point. If we're not adding value to our communities, we're taking away from it, and that's part of our public service commitment to the citizens of the city of Renton. Ms. Donnelly mentioned three projects, and I want to go through them real quickly, but first is, I want to tell you, our development code first requires that 30 percent of trees be retained on any site as part of the development. And I'm gonna run through these real quickly, but I just want to remind the council, last week, we had a representative here from the State Department of Natural Resources, and I'll use her words, I hope I get the quote correct, but she said, "The city of Renton was in rarefied air, having received six awards from the state as well as four growth awards in recent year, that only can be matched by the cities of Bellevue and De Pont in terms of its excellence with respect to trees as part of the urban environment." Trees are a significant part of our urban development as we grow and change as a city, and that's why the City Council established that 30 percent rule for retaining trees years ago. The projects that were quickly outlined, I'll go through these real quickly. The, the project that was referenced up in the Benson Hill area, that's the Reserve at Tiffany Park. 20-acre development, former Renton School District property. By the way, Ms. Timmons was misquoted in the Renton School, in the Renton News article, but one of the reasons that has been put on hold is we're actually doing a survey to ensure that the tree inventory and the tree count is correct, and they're gonna meet our prescriptive requirements for the code in retaining 30 percent of the trees on that site. One of the things the developers considering doing is moving over to a more costly vault system, instead of an open stormwater system, in order to meet our tree requirements for saving trees on that site, as an example of our commitment to saving trees. The second project, Piper's Bluff, that Ms. Donnelly mentioned, I will tell you, that developer lost lots as part of that development proposal through the process in order to meet our tree count requirement. So we strictly are adhering to what the tree requirements are for the city, and in fact, the developer didn't get the requisite number of lots they originally asked for because of our tree requirements. And then, finally, the project, the three lots up on 23rd and Nile there, or 148, those are existing legal lots of record. There was a boundary line adjustment done a few years ago, actually this last year, I believe, for those. And the developer, again, has the right to remove trees as part of the development, but are required to retain 30 percent of these existing trees on site. Now, these are three completely different types of projects here. Developers pursuant to our code do have the right to remove more than 30 percent, but they have to replace those trees at a six-to-one ratio. So for every tree they cut down that's in the 30 percent, they have to replace it with six trees, and these aren't toothpicks. They have to be a minimum of two inches caliber and a diameter at breast height. So we're not talking about really small trees, and there's a significantly more trees. That's supposed to be an incentive for getting people to retain trees rather than take them down and replace them, but there are opportunities for some flexibility in our code as well. So those are the points I would like to make with respect to our tree requirements and our tree ordinance in the city. We take it very seriously, and we're very committed to the livability of our community and the aspects that trees provide as part of that.
Counsel, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. Piper's Bluff is right across from Hazen High.
Yeah.
And it looks like everything's been taken out, from what I can see. The only place I could see that there were any trees retained, maybe at the far opposite.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that right?
That's exactly right.
Because I've had a lot of comments from parents about how it just was scalped.
Yeah, and it appears to be scalped, because you can't see the survey markers on the corners, but in that far corner, that is the save area for saving the trees where the lots were removed, and that was instead dedicated as part of a tract.
So 30 percent are back there?
Yeah, they're meeting their 30 percent requirement.
And there will be trees replaced when the plants develop?
There will be trees replaced, and they will be replaced at a six-to-one ratio.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, because I hear a lot.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I did, as Ms. Donnelly mentioned, I had development close to my home, and I was sort of alarmed as, really, more of the trees came out than were supposed to under the plan. That was some years ago, and I appreciate that the staff have made changes to put fences around trees and so forth. I learned a lot of, a lot of lessons from the experience. I also, I love trees, and for those of you that know my oldest daughter, she just, she constantly rails me about the number of trees that are removed for these developments, so she'll never let, let up on this point. But, but I was just gonna say that one thing I did discover is that the trees in the perimeter of a site, especially where they're, they're up against existing neighborhoods, are important for more than just the reason that I'd originally thought. I thought when development went in next to my home, and it was, you know, I thought, okay, well, this would be nice. There's, there's some cedar trees that are, they'll provide a screen. Ultimately, that developer ended up deciding, oh, I'm just gonna take these out, and I'll just plant six-to-one or whatever. The problem is, he, he took them out so that he could regrade, and this happens a lot, you know, and I think in his view, from his perspective, he wants a grade away from the foundation, so he needs to get these trees out to regrade. The only problem is, then as soon as the trees come out and he regrades, he regrades up to my fence line, and all of a sudden, my tree's roots are, are hanging out and exposed, and, and so it left me, so that I incurred a lot of storm damage in the next storm. And so, you know, I think the... And so, you know, I think that the considerations are really complex, but I, I think just as important as retaining the trees is retaining the grades where you're budding existing developed properties that have trees on them. And, and I, I know it's not easy, but I appreciate that the staff's working this.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Chip.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our special presentation.
Good evening, members of the council, Mark Peterson, Fire Chief, the Fire Department. Tonight, we're going to be honoring, honoring the citizens' actions that made a difference and saved lives. And I'd like to introduce to you Denisha Miller. On March 2nd, 2014, Denisha was awake at zero-three-twenty-five in the morning. Now, I don't know, you're a night owl, huh? But she noticed a fire in her, in the adjoining building, right behind her, so she looked out her back window, she could see a fire in the building. She immediately left her building, pulled the fire alarm on her building, went around, pulled the fire alarm on the other building, and evacuated the residents out of that building. And by the time she was done, she evacuated three buildings, and called 911 that night. That took a lot of courage, it took a lot of fortitude. In fact, at the neighborhood debriefing of the fire, someone asked her, why? What did, you know, what made you think to pull the fire alarm? And I think it was, there was a fire alarm tech that had gone to your, and, so she kept a mental note about this, the fire alarm right outside her door. None of the other residents even thought about that. The unique thing about this fire is, the fire appeared to start on the outside of the building, but we found it was in a void space. And so when she saw the fire, there was no smoke in the unit that was on fire at all. So the smoke detectors hadn't activated. By the time the first arriving unit arrived on scene, there was heavy fire inside the unit with smoke and zero visibility in sight. It was Denisha's action that saved some lives that night. And I'd like to recognize her for the actions she took that night, and give her a certificate of appreciation on, on part of the city of Renton, in the city of Renton Fire Department, for the actions she took, and the bravery you had that night. It, it certainly made a difference, and our fire investigators say she did absolutely save lives that night with her actions. Not only did she save lives, but she helped the fire investigators determine where the cause of the fire was, where, kind of, just by pinpointing it, by, by keeping good, good mental note and good, good observation skills. She was able to show them where she saw the fire, and exactly, you know, all the steps that she saw, and that really helped us in our investigation of the fire. So, again, thank you. If it please the council, I'd like to have a picture with Denisha and the council, and we have the incident commander of the fire that night, Carl, and then the two investigators.
Sir.
Congratulations.
Good for you. Thank you.
Family, your friends would like to come up? Photographs up here as well. You're welcome.
Again, this is an example of a person who was faced with an extraordinary circumstance, but had, had, just got involved and made a difference. And so, again, it's my pleasure to come up here and, and present our citizens with these types of awards. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks, Denisha. We appreciate the service. It was tremendous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we've got three items for council consideration. Are there any items that council members would like pulled for discussion?
Being nun, Mr. Mayor, I move the consent agenda to be adopted as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince. The council adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbin?
I, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have, I have some Public Safety Committee reports to present.
Public Safety Committee report, Police Staffing Allocation Commission to Non-Commissioned FTE. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to reduce the number of authorized commissioned police officer positions by one full-time equivalent to create an additional non-commissioned community programs coordinator position to improve communications with our citizens. This is signed by the committee chair, vice chair, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, second by Mr. Taylor. The council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Safety Committee report, Ordinance Amending the Definition of Administrator in City Code. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance expanding the definition of administrator in Renton Municipal Code 1-3-2 to all city department and administrators due to recent amendments to this municipal code. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair, vice chair, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Corbin, second by Mr. Taylor. The council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Community Services does have a committee report.
Community Services Committee report, Airport Advisory Committee Appointments. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in Mayor Law's appointments of Mr. Carl Boswell, Airport at Large Primary Position for an unexpired term expiring May 7th, 2015; Mr. Mark Spiegelman, Airport at Large Primary Position for a term expiring May 7th, 2017; Mr. Mike Johnson, Airport at Large Alternate Position for an unexpired term expiring May 7th, 2017; Mr. Neil Schesley?
Sheasley.
Sheasley, I'm sorry. South Renton Alternate Position for a term expiring May 7th, 2017; Ms. Melody Kroger, Renton Hill Monterey Terrace Alternate Position for a term expiring May 7th, 2017; Mr. Frederick Lund, West Hill Alternate Position for a term expiring May 7th, 2017; Mr. Blake Meisner, The Boeing Company for a term expiring May 7th, 2017; and Mr. Jeffrey Thompson, Highlands Alternate Position for a term expiring May 7th, 2017, to the Airport Advisory Committee. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor? I move the council adopt the Community Services Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Ms. Palmer. The council adopt the Community Services Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
We are fortunate to have one of the new advisory committee members present today. I must say first and foremost that Mr. Neil Sheasley moved here a couple of years ago from Colorado, and he moved into the South Renton neighborhood. He met his wonderful bride, Kathleen, and he immediately began to get involved in community service. He joined the, the South Renton Community Neighborhood Group, and he has seen it that he would like to be a part of this, this advisory board also. His wife works for Boeing, and I'm always excited when new people join this community and they get the sense of how they can contribute. And I'd like to invite Mr. Sheasley to the podium, just to say a couple of words about his joining the committee.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. Like he said, I moved here two years ago from Colorado, and I'd never been involved in community service before. But as soon as I got here and started being around the city and saw how wonderful this city was, I knew I had to get involved. It's just, I'm so tickled to be here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your willingness to serve on the committee. We appreciate it.
Welcome. Thank you.
That is all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
See you tomorrow at rack. Five-thirty.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one committee report from the Utility Committee.
Utilities Committee report, Establishment of the South 132nd Street Sewer Extension Special Assessment District. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the preliminary South 132nd Street Sewer Extension Special Assessment District. The committee further recommends staff proceed with the establishment of the final special assessment upon completion of the construction of the South 132nd Street Sewer Extension Project. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni?
I move that the council concur with the Utility Committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one ordinance for first reading and three for second and final reading.
The ordinance for first reading regards the definitions of administrator in City Code, and ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section 1-3-2 of Chapter 3, remedies and penalties of Title I administrative of the Renton Municipal Code by revising the definition of administrator.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
I move that this ordinance be moved to second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for second and final reading regards adoption of the Maritans annexation, and ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, annexing certain territory consisting of approximately 4.2 acres in the vicinity of Northeast 16th Street and west of 145th Place Southwest, annexing to the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corbin?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Brier? Whoops, excuse me. Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ayes have it.
The next ordinance for second and final regards the zoning for the annexation, and ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, establishing the zoning classification of the property for the Maritans' annexation within the city from R4 Urban Residential Four-Dwelling Units per acre King County zoning, to R4 Residential Four-Dwelling Units per acre city zoning.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be adopted as read, requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corbin?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ayes have it.
And lastly, for second and final reading, is the carry-forward budget adjustment, and ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city fiscal year 2013-14 biannual budget as adopted by ordinance number 5682, amended by ordinances 5686, 5692, and 5699 in the amount of eighty-one million, two-hundred-seventy-five thousand, five-hundred-eighteen dollars.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Person?
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corbin?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Bonny. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next Monday, April 28th, the committee as a whole will meet in council chambers at 5:30 with one topic, major maintenance and capital projects update. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Committee, normally scheduled for this Thursday, April 24th, is canceled. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corbin?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No new business to report, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to report back about a wonderful event that I attended over the weekend in Seattle. I attended a grand opening to a center called Africa Town Center for Education and Innovation. This is located on Martin Luther King and Alaska. It is a, a public facility that the city of Seattle generously accommodated two organizations to create some programs there. One is the Africa Town Center for Education and Innovation, and they have a Young Geniuses Academy. The Young Geniuses Academy seeks to nurture the natural genius in our children by exposing them to culturally relevant, fun, and educational experiences in science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Young geniuses use a culturally relevant approach that highlights African descent people's contributions to the fields of science and art, and explores practical application in their daily lives. Some of the programs they have there, classes they have there, for example, is in software design, engineering, and those types of things. They have a young entrepreneurs class that teaches youth to the fundamentals of learning about business through junior achievement curriculum and hands-on entrepreneurial projects. In addition to that, there is another organization co-locating that facility called the All AL, AL, AL-Nor, Al-Nor Academy of Arts and Sciences Programs for Girls. And this Academy of Arts and Sciences is an extended learning program for middle-school girls. Al-Nor, in Arabic, translates to the light. Their initials, A-N-A-A-S, also in Arabic, translates to humankind. And that organization cherishes the light in all girls for their benefit and for humankind, and they offer a comprehensive program which offers four classes to girls ages ten to fourteen. They had a wonderful turnout. They had several hundred people there. It lasted from about 3:00 PM till about 8:00. I stayed for several hours, but I was very impressed at, you know, the collaboration between this organization, the city of Seattle, using a public space, making it reasonable for them to initially get set up into it, and working out reasonable terms for them in the long term, for the benefit of youth that may not have a facility like that to, to go to, to learn and, and explore their opportunities. And I thought I would bring that back and share it with everyone.
Was that originally a community site?
I'm not exactly sure with the history, but you know the location.
I'm part of Alaska, I was just trying to picture.
Right on the corner of Alaska and Martin Luther King.
The northeast corner?
The northeast corner, yes, that's exactly, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Oh, you're welcome. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This Thursday, April 24th, from 3:00 at 3:00 o'clock, planning Development Committee will have a committee meeting in the council conference room. Two items on the agenda, the Sunset Economic Target Area, and the Comprehensive Plan Update, and that's a briefing. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
And I'd like to announce for Councilman Brier, the Finance Committee will meet next Monday, April 28th, from 5:00 to 5:30 PM. Two topics, vouchers, and emerging issues in revenue streams. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Was there anybody that wanted to address the council? What's the wish?
We adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, so we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?